Talk about today and something that might be on the Monday night agenda. We have accepted the resignation of our part-time worker at the library, Mary. And I believe Heather is our part-time employee that we recently hired.
Yes.
And Star has let us know that she would like to fill Mary's role with Heather. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that she would like to go ahead since she voiced before a part-time employee replace Heather with another part-time employee that would be out of this group of applications that were turned in originally for this job. It's been about a month since we hired all this batch of applications, so we spotted a good potential candidate for that part-time job in that group of applications. Was not that person.
She was wanting to, if we moved Heather into Mary's place, she was wanting to start her at Mary's current rate of pay. Do y'all see an issue with that if I put that on the agenda?
Mary was part-time?
She was 30 hours a week. We were paying her $9.50 an hour.
What are the other part-times that are that much paid? Where's everybody else start out at?
It just varies.
I mean, not the students, but the adults?
Some of the adults, it's more. I mean, it'll be $8 or $8.50 depending on what they're doing.
What's Heather getting paid?
$7.25.
That's minimum, right?
It is.
You just need to be consistent, I don't know.
I just didn't know what y'all wanted to. She told me to ask because she would like to start her at that rate of pay.
But she hadn't been here.
Didn't stay.
Been here long.
If you start her, that's what you're gonna have to do now with the others. How you gonna pick one over another? Pay one a dollar an hour more than you would another one? Not that, I don't know either. Well, I don't know any of them. I'm just saying that you got to stay with whatever you're doing and all that. If not, you're gonna let the change start, start fall off that bank. They're gonna find out about it and say, well, you started so and so.
They'll find out.
Yeah.
I think, I'd have to look. I think nine or $9.50 is what we're paying the singer center ladies.
Would've started them at that?
I don't know. It's because they were driving the van or whatever. I think nine for sure. And then maybe do that later. After her initial 90 days, maybe do the extra 50 if y'all wanted to do that. I just needed some guidance, so I don't know.
I think that's what they need to do, really. And then after a few months, they want that.
So how many hours is she working right now?
She's working 19 right now.
And she's going up to 30?
Mm-hmm.
And we don't have to pay anybody off her?
We will have to. We'll have to cut her retirement and she can be offered the health insurance. At 30 hours, we would have to offer her those.
So, and how, what's the cutoff for that?
For what?
For the retirement insurance.
Uh, it's down in the, like, 19 to 20 something hours.
Okay, okay. So anything more than what she's currently doing?
Yes. Because Mary was offered the insurance, she didn't take it because she didn't, she was on her husband's insurance.
We're talking about the library worker, Scott, to catch you up. We've accepted the resignation because of belt reasons of our part-time library worker. Her doctorate master's, not have two jobs. She selected to keep her other job for four hours.
Well, what have we been doing before? Before this call, what have we been doing?
Well, like I said, in the, like, the singer center, we've started them at nine or $9.50 depending on whatever they were doing. If they were driving the van or just kitchen help or whatever, you know, not just the standard $7.25.
Are they 30 hours also?
Uh, no. They're like 20 to 25.
And what puts this lady here? How many hours she gonna be working?
Uh, Mary was working 30 hours a week, so Heather will be working 30.
How much was Mary making?
$9.50 an hour.
What did she start off at?
I'd have to look back, but I mean, we've had, she's been here for quite a while, so there's been several across-the-board raises and things like that.
Is this girl just starting that?
Uh, she just started, the one that's gonna be replacing Mary, just started about a month ago.
What are you recommending?
I thought we should wait 90 days and see if she's working out. And then after 90 days, make the adjustment if she's.
So start her at nine? Is that what you're saying? And then after 90 days?
I'd like, I'd like to, if Star knows that she's a good worker, adjust her to nine when she goes to 30 hours. And then after 90 days, if she's still working out good, make that other step to get her to that current pay level.
All right. I just needed some guidance on what to put on the agenda for Monday. And I think Mary's kind of leaving it open where if she needs to come back and help with some of the summer reading programs or whatever, she's gonna be available to do that. She did ask would she be paid her $9.50 an hour rate if she came back to help, so.
We'll decide whether.
At that time?
Later.
Okay. All right. I'll just leave that off of the board and tell me if we actually have to do that or not.
We've had a job posted at the rec center to replace our programs coordinator. We did the interviews Monday night, starting at 5 o'clock till about 7:30. Had seven interviews. Most of them were pretty good interviews. The Tim and myself and two of his part-board members met and did the review with these applicants. And they're gonna meet, Tim and his board is gonna meet on Thursday night and decide who they'll be recommending for our Monday night meeting. And we're trying to get someone started Monday night on that. They were uncertain as to who they'll be recommended. At the Monday night meeting, said they'd like to meet officially one more time before they make the recommendation. Camper ordinance, we've had some, people reported to be living at least part-time, if not full-time, in campers in our city limits. We have an ordinance against that. We've been looking for it, but Tammy was able to find it for us. We had one in the 12 or 13 ordinance group, and the next one, we didn't find it specifically. I think it's maybe separated from the many back-at-home ordinance. We do have an ordinance in place, and we're gonna be delivering copies of these to some areas where these situations exist and try to put these camper livers on notice that that cannot be anymore and going forward. We'll have to ask them to discontinue because they're leaving orders now also.
Does that include, like, RVs? Is that like, there's that RV park behind Bevel?
Not the RV park. The RV park is specified in the ordinance. These are like random, here and there.
Just not unapproved property?
Sometimes it's on a lot with another house. Sometimes it's just sitting on a lot that they've been able to acquire. You have things like seasonal hunting camps that a lot of people like to reside in the camper. But within our city limits, we've got people that use it as their total house for their house needs. That's where they go home at night and lay their head. And we have no ordinance against that unless it specifically meets the guidelines on the ordinance. So we're gonna try to address that right away in as many places as we can locate and put those folks on notice. Got word that Buccaneer Drive, the engineer from Goodman Mills in Haywood, said that that job is supposed to start in late March. I told him, "Good luck on March, as well as that ground is." And he said, "As soon as it's dry enough, they're gonna do the Buccaneer Drive, not just the new surface. They're gonna do the underground, they're gonna plow in the current paving as a foundation for the new road. Then we'll have a new blacktop and a layer of asphalt that'll be put over that. And that'll be to provide marketability for these houses that's rolling off the lot there at Hamilton Home Rivers." But the public will be using it also, so it's gonna be very good. Rodney and Heath, the gas company, our Rodney has spoken, been in touch with the engineers from Love. They're moving forward now, contacting us about utility. Rodney explained how we do our water, and they loved our method, said it was very satisfactory, and they'd be proud to pave their way on it. They want a two-inch and a three-inch meter set for their water needs separately. They'll be put in a way that they'll be housed in a small cabinet cavity where we can get in there and work on them. And also, we'll be able to give them a bypass in case we have a meter go bad or if their water meter goes bad, we can make sure they don't run out of water. So Rodney's designed that, and they loved what he told them, and we talked about it this morning. Their startup date for the actual building of Love has been pushed out to April. We were expecting the March 21st, but the contractor, an engineer, told Rodney that it would be April when they really get going on that. But Heath Reed also told me that they'd inquire about the gas utility down there. So, not gasoline, but gas. So we know that project's moving forward, bid at a time, not as fast as we'd hoped, but at least it's still coming. Probably 35, it accommodates the new Love's bids to be left in March for the road improvements down there, the turn lane on 35. So that's also moving forward and progressing. So we're very happy about that. If you haven't heard, Bradley Byrne, who's in the Senate race, has asked to come for a meet and greet. He wanted to do it here, but he was gonna go past the 5 o'clock closing time for us, so we hosted him in our city at the rec center. So he'll be meeting people and, I guess, making a political speech, 24:30 and 5:30 today. So any of you that would like to leave this meeting, attend that meeting, certain, gonna be a good host. I think he's making some headways in his campaign. There's an awful lot of negatives coming out toward each other in that campaign right now, so I don't know how that's gonna go. All of them vying for a seat that now is held by Senator Jones. He was elected over Roy Moore a couple of years ago, and it's time to run again. Bradley Byrne, Jeff Sessions, and Coach Kirbyfield, I think, are Republican candidates. We don't know what the outcome's gonna be, but I guess any of the Love conservative, they're all eligible candidates. Pretty good folks, I think. What do y'all wanna talk about today? I didn't, I didn't have a whole lot of things to run to the meeting today. Gonna get on this camp matter right away. Got some other ugly places in town where, I got a promise from John Cox that he would build a fence to hide his ugly cars out in Weston, and they're gonna revisit him. I sent the chief to see him last time. I'm going with the chief, get him to tell me that person to person. He called me last time and said he was gonna build a fence, but he may be blaming it on wet weather, and there's been a lot of things held up because of our January and February this year. It's not been a real good time to work outside, but I'm gonna find out when John's gonna build his fence in the next couple of days.
I had someone ask about the new water rate and when there's excessive days on the bill and they go over, how are they gonna be compensated? But it's not their fault with O'Grady. For example, the bills are usually 28 to 30 days, but some of the bills go 35, 38 days, 40 days depending. And they wanted to know how, what was gonna happen since it wouldn't be their fault they went over.
Who's doing all this figuring?
So, I'm not gonna give the name on TV. But I did look at, you know, at some of the bills, and we've had some, you know, some times when we did go over our, our read dates, we did go over.
We're not gonna have a lot of those happening, or we'll have some new meter readers. Just tell them we plan to get on a steady cycle and get it done. Get a lot of the guys to stay on time. If y'all want to compensate someone if we ran 35 days and it pushed them past their minimum, it's gonna be a hard issue to handle. How do we do that? Our best bet's to read those meters on time and get our bills out.
That's right. Then it's no problem. If we don't, we'll have to have some at 32 days, 33 days, 34, 35. You can't do that.
Be very angry, right?
Well, you just can't keep up with.
In the last 12 to 15 months, we've had a few issues of that happening. But we've got some new personnel in place, and I think the system's working better. I think we're gonna be right on time for the whole. Angela, do you have anything else specific that we need to bring before the council today?
No, sir.
The only other thing, when they strip the roads downtown, where we had new pavement there between the, the city parking lot and the old Loaden's building, are they're going to be parking places on both sides of the road? Or are we just gonna go with one side so there's actually can strip it and there way two lanes? How's the parking gonna be handled there?
You're gonna have to make it a one-way street if you don't have traffic. And if you don't, you can't, I mean, you can't have parking on both sides of the streets without enough traffic. Isn't that right?
Not a good strip.
Yeah. If you don't, somebody's gonna get in the way.
I don't know if it's crowned from the center. I don't know if we moved the stripe over, if it's gonna make somebody go up the road like this. I don't really know if it's, if it has to have the stripe dead center. We may lose a lot of parking right there. I don't know if we park on either side.
I just wondered, I don't know when they're gonna come and start the striping, but I wondered how that was gonna be handled.
I think we're beginning to get in a little bit of money from that gas, new gasoline tax. Aren't we getting a little bit of money now?
Yeah, we got some in starting in January.
How about the Loaden building there? You know, we got that new parking lot that's right there back. Say if you come, you know what I'm talking about. You got a big parking lot.
But we've been letting people parallel park on both sides of the street.
Yeah, I know it, but you can't, I don't think you can do that.
I think Tammy may have come on something there about, about that. I'd thought about moving the stripe more towards the Loaden building and letting the parallel parking be on the, next to the parking lot. But it may, it may not be slumped properly. We might have to stay in the center of that street. I'd hate to cause a car to pull off and go into that building. We better have that looked at before we strip. I don't know the answer, just sit here at this table and I'd see what you're talking I'm anxious to get some striping done. We really, we need some striping. I'd like to get it going as quickly as we can. When we get one more check on that new gas tax, I'd like to see how much striping that'll do and get somebody to come on and strip everything we can readily pay for, because that's what we're voted to do with the money, first monies that we get in. I think we got over $9,000.
Uh, in January, we had $9,560.80.
Should be able to do some streets with $18,000 or $19,000, get started anyway.
Well, excuse me, going back to that street down there, of course, I go down to there every day. Why don't you get somebody to see, I don't know who you've got, go down there and measure and see what's the best way to do it?
Yeah, we do.
And you're gonna have to do a way, I think, with parking on one side of the other.
It's gonna be tight. If we've got a stripe that keeps people, I think people wouldn't give it over to that, those parallel parkers and getting as far over as they could. And if somebody meeting somebody, they'd slow down real slow so they don't scrub the end. I think it's, I think it's gonna be a tight squeeze. We will measure it. It might be adequate for parking.
Maybe.
I still might.
I don't think, we get them to do it. Cause you got, you got now a little bit of parking in that new parking lot there. I know I parked there this morning, there was a few parks. A lot of days, there's none, any. What's happening, those people, courthouse and all, a lot of them park over there and park all day. You got a lot of cars in there that go in and park and stay up, and the people that work in those stores, they park right there and stay there all day. In the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Cause I was really surprised how full it was most of the time when I was.
Some of those young folks that live in Dorans use the one.
Use there.
Over there directly behind the store buildings, the two-story buildings.
Yeah. But I believe you'd have enough room to park on one, sit one side of the street and still have plenty, enough room for the streets, you know, to have plenty of room. But it needs to be looked, looked at.
Might as well to talk to Mike Johnson, get him to measure that for us, make a note.
And see which side would be the best if we had parking to park on.
I don't think I'll forget it, but write it down, I'll just.
If they had park vertical on both sides, that was the most of parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd lose about five or six parking spots up and down the street if we kicked that, or park on both sides. And that parking is pretty precious over there in that area.
Yeah.
They just have a lot of certain times when they need that extra. Well, Joe, it's good to have you with us today. We missed you when you missed the meeting that night.
Well, Joe, you're gonna, this meeting now is not a regular meeting. You go into paper or anything. Are you gonna talk to the mayor and the council here about how much they're gonna pay me for hauling you here and back?
Well, I had to.
You'll put that in the paper?
I whisper that number in your ear a little bit.
And it's a lot of trouble too, having to load you and unload you.
You're having to drive all the time, Bobby. And I know you have to all the driving.
Yeah, I do, and we're turning.
And we're not there. We're to park when I get here, of course.
We don't have anything else. Hope to see y'all Monday night.
I had one thing that's gonna bring up, my neighbor brought it up today. Those brush over on our street there, they've been laying there about a month. You know, I know it's nobody's fault here, but that's a contracting job, I guess, for a power company.
Well, you know, sometimes at the edge of a yard, the people don't know, they need to call in to Sheila and sort of pick up for it. We've got a grapple truck that'll pick up brush if we get a call to not, to tell us to come out there, but we don't just automatically go out there and get it.
Well, this starts over right this side of Old Vic Lumber Company. All the way from the bridge and up our street there.
Who cut that?
That Asklun's or somebody, I think.
Well, they're probably just planning to come back and get it. They grind up all their stuff.
Yeah, but it's been there about a month. Looking bad.
Okay. Well, I don't want to do with that much brush.
You're a motherfucker.
Those people usually get paid that their contractors know.
They would be nice.
To pick that up. And we've got news on our side to contact that company and see when they're gonna move that brush.
You go and get your brush. Go and get your brush.
I didn't realize that and picked it up.
They'd drive all that way somewhere.
Any word on the jail and the industrial park? Anything develop on that?
There was a meeting at the commissar's office where they addressed methods of raising money and we haven't, we haven't burst that one yet. One of the mayors wanted to tax his city to raise his part. That wasn't a method I had in mind. The commissars asked for about $198,000 off our budget every year to go on the sale of I told them I couldn't answer that question by myself, but we'll talk about that. I want our attorney president for us to discuss that. We'll try to get that at our next work session. Whether everybody wants to go in their own direction or chip in their money, I'd like we to stay uniform whatever we do. If we've got to come up with funds to pay for the jail, I hope everybody in the county's paying a portion of it since it's a county jail.
Oh, yeah.
All the residents don't come from the inner city. Some of the residents come from the country, you know, they're housed in the jail, so... The commission was kinda focusing on the municipalities of the county to pay all the fund thing and leaving good county folks out of the picture. I kinda had in mind to include all the residents of the county to be involved.
If you threw that, what, our police got over $65,000 in overtime. Why did we have $65,000 in police department? What's the, what would be the deal for having that many? What's... I don't understand how we'd run up that much.
Great question.
I mean, that's just not... We could harp, we could harp two more, at least two more police officers full of time.
Some of the time during the year, we've had, we've had some folks on leave from the We had one man whose son was wounded in an accident and took a lot of time off, sick time off, and someone was having to cover shifts there. And we had somebody at the academy during part of the year. So, and we've, we've worked a lot of overtime and it's discouraging to see $189,000 in total overtime from all departments. Police and water department had most overtime, but the fire department had a good bit. We, we have had department ed news where we've addressed this, Angela and I have with the department ed's, asking them not to work a minute of overtime that wasn't actually was necessary. Whether or not they listen to that talk, doesn't matter. We hoping to get all the guys certified, hired and supposed to help us in a situation with overtime, to have adequate personnel to not have to work those overtime shifts. We had a tremendous amount of overtime in the last February.
They had more overtime than all the rest of them, but yet. They had every other department up together and that'll not add up to what the police department had.
They didn't have the most. They didn't have the most.
Yeah, we'll overtime leave for the water department, $75,000. You can understand more of the water department, I think, though, than you could that, because you got problems with water leaks and things with the water department all the time. Of course, that's still a lot, but you're gonna have problems, especially even if your wastewater treatment plant, you got a lot of that's down there, I'm sure, and water leaks. I don't know what, I guess we got more to come out from.
We pay some overtime for guys that accompany our teams out town on ball trips and things like that. Sometimes that winds up being overtime involving that and trips like that. But I thought the police had an awful lot of overtime considering, you know, we're trying to cut back on overtime. I've talked to some other mayors about overtime pay and most of them tell me that overtime is a real problem for their municipalities also.
Yeah, the water department's gonna have a lot of overtime.
Yeah, they've got to come out when as much water's gone and they don't have any water service, they have to put it back in service and fix a broken iron and that kind of thing. But I'm like you, I feel like we just got paid up and, you know, stood out in some cases with overtime.
I figure all times are the same shade, same time.
Well, it's a problem at all towns. I'm not sure it's as large a problem as we have. Straight time, you know, is what we always hope to pay. When you're paying time and a half on every hour that's being worked past 40, it's painful.
Well, that way it mounts to time and half time when they're working it. Well, I can jump on that if I was in a truck. I'm telling that people it's working.
They get taxed a little bit here for those dollars they earn, but it does make the pocket book a little thicker.
I don't get that many too much, so it's two or three a pop in one.
Someday, someday. All right, well, about 25 minutes, we'll get to hear from Bradley.
Oh, Rodney.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.